I've got, I've got, I am all set. So, somebody had it all set up so I didn't have to deal with all the technologies.
I grabbed one just in case.
Okay. Oh, there's more of this one. I'm probably going to have to... Yes, they do. It might consist of all four units. How do we advertise here? It's like 10:55. I'm trying to remember. Yep. It's a short amount of time. Yes, they do. It might consist of all four units. You've got the little... How do we advertise here? It's like 10:55. I'm trying to remember. It's like 10:55. Pretty long person. At pleasure allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Welcome everyone to this May 14th meeting of the Waterville Planning Board. We will start with approval from the April 23rd Planning Board meeting.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Phew, that was close. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Okay. Item number two, disclosure of conflict of interest. Does anybody have a conflict they wish to disclose on votes that they might take tonight?
I am employed as laboratory instructor at Colby College. I don't believe that I stand to personally benefit from the building of these dormitories, but if everybody feels I should recuse myself, I am happy to.
Okay. We can let the record reflect that we discussed that last week, last time, and there was no conflict. Any other conflicts?
Yep. I work on and off for John Jabber, and I don't feel like it would necessarily be a conflict, but I'm also, I also think that it would be best if I just recuse myself from that specific vote.
Okay. Any discussion from the board? And do you want us to take a vote on conflicts or?
Feel free to. I don't think I'm putting it in the right vote.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Do...
I guess we're voting on accepting her recusal?
Yeah, I guess so. I like, I guess.
I accept my recusal.
Okay. So Cassie will recuse herself. We're not voting on that tonight, but that means you can't make any comments on it. Okay. Item number three, Colby College is requesting preliminary and final plan review for the 217-bed dormitory on Mayflower Hill Drive. Hi Holly.
Hi Sam, how are you?
Good.
My name is Holly McKenzie. I'm project manager at Colby College and I'm representing the college.
My mic's on, I can't hear a thing. I'm trying to adjust my hearing aids and I can't hear anything.
Okay. My mic is on, I don't know.
I'm pretty sure this is on.
Yeah.
If I don't hold it long enough, I'm starting to hear bad.
Sylvia, maybe if you sit closer to one of the speakers, it might help? I don't know.
She's suggesting you sit closer to your...
Like if, in the back corner maybe, where the sound's coming?
Yeah. Or that's... I mean, I can get loud, but I don't think that's necessary.
Yeah.
Yeah. That might help.
It should be able to connect to the internet and...
It'll be delayed.
Is that better? Okay.
Well, hi everyone, thank you again. So I'm Holly McKenzie, project manager for Colby College, representing the college this evening as we go for our preliminary and final approval of the Mayflower Hill Residence Hall, or the Residence Hall of Mayflower Hill, and going through the site plan review permit. So we have a plan set here. The front document here is rendering of the building, and this is the plan that we, a simplified plan of what we showed last time, showing the wings of the building, although on the ground floor it looks like separate buildings, they are connected above the first floor, as we discussed last time. It is 109,000 square feet, and it will host 217 students. The first phase of the project is a site utility relocation, and we actually, that will run through the summer into fall, and the building foundations and the building construction will not actually start until the fall of 2024, with the project planned to be completed for fall occupancy of 2026. And site plan here, a little hard to see, but, so this shows our storm drainage, everything, we're capturing the same amount of water, just in a different, different method. We have a detainage system, and then it is exiting out into our detention pond three on the east side of the campus. Plan showing the utilities as they wrap around the building. And then utility plan and profiles. Steam line. And then some site details here, so I can go back up to the site plan. Happy to answer any questions if anyone has any other questions regarding the project.
Great. Any questions? April.
I was just curious why they're not connected on the first floor? Is that just to invite students to be able to walk through this big block of buildings?
Correct. Yep.
So we'll have, I think this plan shows it a little bit better up here. So as you exit the Gordon Center, you can walk through the building in some sort of sense, as you travel to Cotter Union, as you travel to the library, as you travel to Dana, and it just helps bring community, that students are traveling throughout the building, even if you don't particularly live in that building.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Hearing none, we can move on to findings and facts. Do you have a copy of it?
I do.
Good, okay. All right. So, item number one, development will not result in undue water or air pollution on or off-site.
True.
Item number two, sufficient water available for foreseeable needs.
True.
Number three, development will not cause unreasonable soil erosion or reduction in the capacity of the land to hold water.
True.
Item number four, the development will not cause unreasonable highway or public road congestion.
True.
Item number five, the development will provide for adequate solid waste disposal.
True.
Item number six, the development will not cause an unreasonable burden on the ability of the municipality to dispose of sewage.
True.
Number seven, the development will not have an undue adverse effect on scenic and natural beauty of the area, aesthetics, historical sites, et cetera.
True.
Number eight, the development is in conformance with zoning.
True.
Number nine, the developer has adequate financial and technical capacity to meet the standards.
True.
And then the conditions of approval from fire and sanitary systems that were in the letters.
Correct.
Any further discussion? I'll entertain a motion to approve the findings and facts.
I'll make the motion.
Oh, sorry. Amy.
That's two good questions. Are you revealing the cost yet of the project?
No, we are not.
And can you say what company is doing the construction?
Landry French.
I'll make the motion to approve. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Great. Thank you.
Thank you. We have our plans to be signed as well?
Yeah, we can take a little break and sign those. Is it blue ink and or black?
Black.
Thanks. Item number four, 15 Washington Street LLC is requesting preliminary plan review for a 40-unit apartment complex at 15 Washington Street.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm back again. I know we're going to go over it. We tried diligently, I know we can't get final here, but we want to try to get everything done that we can, so when we come back for the final, there really shouldn't be, hopefully it won't be any questions. We've worked with the water, the sewer, fire department, and we think we have all the drawings. Works with city engineer, he had 17 items that we put onto the drawings that are now onto these drawings. So, that's where we are.
Okay. Is there a way to zoom in on that so that we can see it a little bit better? Because the one that we got was hard to read.
I think we can close that little window on the side. Wait, can I help? Yeah, okay, David, go ahead.
Okay. All right. I will open it up for discussion, so questions for Mr. Jabber.
So, are we looking at the sewer plan? Is that...
Yeah, we have, that's the site plan, but we, on the site plan, we have the sewer. We got an easement. We found out it was financially better for us, instead of coming down Washington Street and hooking onto that way, there was septic in the back behind, so we got an easement, and it's been recorded. Bobby Martin did that. We did that last week and got the recording on that, and we have it if we need, we could forward it to you.
Did LP Engineering do this drawing?
Yes.
So their name's on there?
Yes.
All right.
They were the engineer on it.
Okay. After you have the easement, where does that connect back to? Is that where Seaton Hospital?
My mic's not on. Okay, I got it now, thank you. Is that connect to Seaton Hospital, or where is that sewer line running?
There's a brand-new sewer line, do you know the, the road where Uncle Joe lives? What's the name of that road? Where Delta Ambulance is?
Right, Lincoln.
Okay.
Yeah, those houses right there, they put a brand-new sewer line in there, which was for the hospital as well. So we're able to tie into that sewer line behind us, but we had to cross over slightly across their property, so we went and got an easement from them to put this line in.
From the Lincoln green condos?
From the condo.
Okay.
Lincoln condos.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we got that easement from them.
When you come back for preliminary or final plan review, it would be helpful to have a scale so we can judge the size.
Okay.
Somewhere here, because there's no scale, it's very tough to judge the proportions.
Yeah, I will do that.
Okay.
To be honest with you, it is the scale on the larger drawings, this, but it's not, it's not on that, but we could make it, we could make it on that if you wanted to.
So I was looking at some of the Butters properties, and these seem very small in relation to some of the other houses around us, so it didn't look like it was scaled.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Is there another slide or?
Other questions?
Other questions?
How large are the apartments?
There's going to be, each building is 30 by 60. There's going to be three apartments on the main level, which are two levels, ground floor, and the back, and those are 1,200 square feet, 600 per floor, and then the basement's a 900 square feet. The daylight basement's out the back, so it's...
Okay, in the back apartment?
Yeah, in the back. You kind of go around, if you look at building one and three, there's kind of a walkway, you walk around the backs, the backs of the building, that's what gets you into the building.
Okay.
To the basement, to the lower level.
So, that one is a one-floor apartment?
Yes, that one's a one-floor, but there's only two of them on the bottom floor, and those are 900 square feet.
Okay. Are those one bedrooms?
Those are two bedrooms as well.
Those are two as well? Okay.
John, have you spoken to anyone from DOT about the number of trips coming and going, traffic?
The amount is, we, we have talked about it in previous meetings, with the, but the amount of people, I mean, we'd calculated 80, but I think the real number is around 50 cars per day in and out of that facility.
And reference the 2004 traffic study that was done, and it's based on number of units, I believe?
That was...
And your microphone, sorry.
Sorry. That was the, that was the traffic manual. That's a standard is five point. I think it was six, eight trips per day per unit.
And the math on that worked out to be about 200, is that?
I think it was, I think it was more than that, but...
I have the email, I just...
So, so our city engineer will address traffic in his letter? Yeah, I calculated, I think it was 324, I'm sorry, for some reason I don't, yeah, sorry, 234 trips.
234 trips, okay. For a 40-unit project, okay. And has DOT expressed any concern about that number of trips on the...
When we originally talked to them, the number was so, when we talked to them, we talked to them when we, we were here before, it's really, we're coming with this big building, which is very similar in number of units, and it was just different design and all that. They had no issue with that amount of traffic on that road.
All right. And how many parking spaces do you have? Or is it, what's the total number for these units?
I think there is 80, 80 parking places, but we have the ability, if we needed to, to either park in front of the buildings, because I have, we're putting the building set back, so four additional spaces if we needed it. We could have put another 20 on each side, and we could also do on the back if we needed more parking spaces.
When you say on each side, can you elaborate? Each side of what?
I'm going to run over real quick.
Yeah.
We can put parking right in here, here, and we can put parking in here, here.
And that would get you a 20 additional?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any site for a dumpster, or how is that going, sanitation?
If we, if we wanted to, we, we talked about it, we could put a, we were talking about putting a building possibly in the back, which would take care of the trash for, and we would set up a dumpster for the, because we're going to maintain the ownership of these properties, so...
And snow removal? Do you have an area figured out where you can move snow, plow snow?
Because we have all this area, if you see where the fire truck turnaround is, we have all of that area from their back. We have, we have a lot of area that we can take, well, the original design is take the snow and just take it all the way back to that back space.
If you have so much area, why are all the units pushed into court, close to Washington Street? Could you spread them out, or why is it laid out?
It allows us to come back to talk to you two years from now.
Okay.
Because the original plans, we were going to put 12 units in, but with interest rates, the banks and all that, this is the plan they wanted to go with. I mean, this is more where they, the sweet spot of this $10 million project, instead of it being a $15 million project. So we could come back later, and that's why we left it. Because we're going to design it, the septic, the septic is designed for 12 buildings, water is designed for, the sprinkler system is designed for 12 buildings, the land is set for it.
So it's going to be a septic system, not a public sewer?
No, it's public, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
No, it's public sewer.
And each one of these buildings, how many units?
Five units.
Five units per building?
1,200 square feet on the upper and 900 on, three uppers, and then 900 square feet on the two bottom ones.
And there potentially 12 buildings?
Potentially.
Potentially.
Okay.
All right. Would the parking lot have lighting?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Overhead lighting?
So I was just going through the list that, that Mr. McPherson had, had put together, and I'm just curious, on some stuff, I believe I've gone through all the documents that were sent on to us, but, you know, looking at, you know, I haven't seen a real, I guess, landscape plan, or unless I missed it.
The planting plans you don't have, the stormwater one we do, that's part of this group. So we, we really, I wanted, I knew the bigger issue was going to be stormwater, you know, managing the water on the site. So we're going to, the way we're going to do it is, is the road is, from Washington Street is going to tip to the back slightly, quarter inch per foot, so all the runoff on the water will run towards the back, and we're going to have a holding area past where the fire turnaround is right there, so we will slope it that way. And then behind the buildings, we are going to trench behind buildings on the right side, which is 1, 3, 5, and 7, there'll be a trench there, and behind 2, 4, 6, and 8, there'll be a trench there, and they will all dump into this holding pond behind there, so that will be the lowest elevation. So that will be built up, so all the water will settle into that area.
So is all of, is all of that stuff on a plan somewhere?
It's in, I, I'm just kidding you. Do we have that drawing?
I didn't see it in your drawing. I didn't see one. Okay, maybe I need a little, David, would you like?
We don't have it, we don't have it, it's this drawing.
I have all of the drawings that you sent, saved here, I'm just afraid...
Does she not have it?
No, she doesn't.
Okay.
Okay.
We'll send it to her. So this is, this is stormwater with a...
Yeah, and, and again, I was talking more about landscaping, you know, like a plan that shows where trees are going to be planted, and shrubs, and other things like that.
My landscaper's in the back, so if you want to talk to her, you can...
Well, no, we want to see it on a plan.
Yes, now, I will.
Right. That's the thing. And it's the same with the dumpster. The dumpster has to be on the plan, because it needs to be where you say it's going to be, right? It can't be going and just go, ah, we'll put the dumpster over here.
Right.
It needs to be on the plan, showing exactly where it is, and what type of fence is going to be around it, and all that wonderful stuff. So, these are the things that we're going to be looking for.
Okay, I, to be honest with you, in the list, we were kind of putting up, trying to get it together, the city engineer was great about, sorry. The city engineer was great about giving us the stuff, that was one of my, I, we didn't get that one.
Yeah.
But we will, so we'll make sure when we're back here in hopefully two weeks, that we'll have a, a plan for that. Shrubbery and the dumpster, and a dumpster. Where, the, the location that we'll put it, and things like that.
Any other questions? Yep. From the board? Okay, we'll open it up to the public. So you just have to come up to the microphone though, Sylvia? Thank you.
I am in a butter, right off the back end of his property, and I'm hearing things about water coming down, and I've already got enough of a water problem, because we have soggy water there, and if they start putting in more water, letting more water run off Washington Street to my house on Lincoln Street, it's going to create some problems. And the other thing I'm concerned about is my privacy, because with a building looking down over me, it's going to take away all of our privacy. And I'm concerned about maybe putting up big trees, you know, the, I don't know what they call them, but they have some, they're from Europe, they're the tall trees, and either that, or some kind of fencing or something, because we need protection, because what happens is, the land comes here and it drops, and when we first moved there, the people that owned that property had actually dumped trash over the edge, and my husband had to make sure it was cleaned up. So I'm really concerned about this. I want to make sure it's done right. I have no problems with putting in a building, but I mean, this is going to be major building, this is going to be like in the middle of the city, brought up into western, you know, Waterville, and I'm, I mean, we came there because we had woods and privacy, and this is going to take it all away. So, and I mean, I got my letter and everything here, and, you know, I saw that and I said, oh no, here we go again. So I just would like you to listen, I've spoken before, you people before, and did not feel heard, and I hope you will listen to this, because the privacy thing is very important. And I hope you will listen to this, because the privacy thing is very important. I mean, we lived in South China, and we were surrounded by woods. We lived over in Clinton for a while, surrounded by woods. When we lived in Connecticut, we were surrounded by woods. Privacy has always been very important to us. And I am just envisioning people looking out their windows and looking down at my house. And I'm really concerned about it. So I would like to see somebody make some kind of arrangements to make sure. And now I also have noticed that there's a house for sale that is abutting, and I'm just wondering if that's a concern of that person, and that's why they're selling their house. I'm not, I'm gonna be brought out of my house feet-first, but, you know, it's the kind of thing that honestly, I, it just destroys the nature of our neighborhood. I mean, we are a wooded area back there. And to put a big set of apartment buildings up there is, number one, it's going to be destruct, disturbing. But if they, if you make arrangements to have privacy protected and not run that water down the back of my house, I mean, I'm really concerned about, and you can come see me anytime you want, 750 Lincoln Street is where I live. And I will give you a tour, okay? Because, I mean, I'm not, I'm not against putting buildings in, because I know we need housing. But I just want it done right, and protecting those of us who live in that area. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
For, for reference, do you know which?
It's, she's-
Do you know which one it is?
Yeah, she's that back one that comes all the way, it says Sylvia Spear.
Yeah, I can show you. Okay, so this is...
Yeah, right there.
Yeah, and that's it, right in the back. And see, the sewer easement, I didn't even know about. Because we don't have sewer, I mean, I have a septic tank.
We're not building, we're not building that big building you were thinking about? These are just two-story-
Right, but I mean, I'm concerned about privacy, you know, because if you have kids in there and-
This is all wooded through here.
Yeah.
That will be here, and-
See, there's no woods right up on that hill, and, and, and it just drops right off there. I mean, if you look, if you looked at it...
Can I put, can I put trees in the sewer?
Yeah, so, sorry. I can't tell you what you can do with your easement, because it's not an easement with my property, so, it's not part of-
That's, that's my concern.
As, as far as the water is concerned, these people, storm, I mean, you can't have water leave my property and just go running onto your property.
Yeah, I, I just don't wanna see water flowing down here, or, because already there's a swale between my property and my grandson's property, big swale there. In fact, he's gonna put a little bridge over there, so they can, the kids can come over there. But, you know, it's a matter now of making sure that there's protection, because, I mean, if they're gonna have kids in there, I don't want kids in my backyard. I mean, I was a teacher for a long time. We're playing dumb with kids.
So you're not babysitting the kids?
No. But I mean, that's basically what I'm concerned about.
Okay, and I understand that, and to be honest with you, I, I can't allow, you know, my code or whatever, having water leave my property and impede somebody else's.
Right.
So...
So what are you planning to do about it?
Well, that's what we had asked, so, so that's what David was asking about, with the retention pond, like how?
See, I couldn't hear.
Oh, okay, so, so-
My hearing aids won't connect to this building for some reason, so I can't connect.
I'm sorry. So, that's one of the questions that David had, so in there, when they come back for the final plan review, they need to show us, like underground soil filters, and how they're going to just, like, filter out the water and do the drainage? So that has to be part of the final plan that they present to us.
I can walk out on my lawn and be, shoo, shoo, shoo.
Yeah.
You know, I don't want any more of that than I have to.
John, do you have to do earthwork? I do know there's a lot of, like, added silt and stuff like that.
I've done all the soil studies.
Yeah.
SW Coal came in, and they did the studies.
Yeah.
And the reason we're putting garages in, in the other meetings, is to go down to virgin soil. So that's all we'll be doing, is removing the soil to put our foundations. And we put our foundations, as we're gonna be sitting on virgin soil. So we won't have any problems with that.
So, just to like, kind of put Sylvia's mind at ease, there, you're not building it up on that 10-foot of extra fill, right?
No, we're, we're going down, we're, we're, we're going down, the house is gonna sit down, so the whole basements are gonna be down below grade. So you're only gonna, then, it's only a two-story, it's not even like the other one, which is five stories.
I know, that, that was really-
That was big.
Yeah. So, yeah, so all, what you see now there on that site, just so you can kind of picture a little bit more, I don't know, Ann, if we can get to like, the rendering photo or something, we don't have that, or...
I, I have it if you want to.
Yeah, well, that might be helpful, John, if you don't mind grabbing it. But, um, they have to, they're gonna remove all that top fill, all that fill. So, so it won't be as much of people being able to look all the way down, you know? It'll be back down to the same height as the properties that surround it. Yeah. No, not as low as you, but... I know, she has-
Mrs. Spear?
In the backside, this is all the underground.
Yeah, as lo, as long as there's some kind of privacy protection, you know, that's the thing I'm really concerned about, because, I mean, as it is, they built those apartment buildings with that wall, I call it the prison wall, between the house and mine. And, and, I mean, I lost a lot of privacy then, and, I mean, so I just kinda-
You're lucky, we almost put a pickleball, we, we almost put a pickleball court there, then you really would've killed me. Then we only put in the, yeah.
Thanks for that. Okay, I, I, that's all I wanted to say, just to be concerned, okay?
Thank you.
I mean, I don't know if you got it, this, this is-
Yeah.
This, that's all we said.
It's up on the screen.
She's got it.
Beg of work.
Are there other questions from members of the public?
Can you explain, you're talking about, I did a daylight base-
Can you get her up?
Do you mind just, sorry?
I understand that you're planning now- The name? Of Sandra Costa, and I live on Lincoln Street. That you're planning to have daylight basements, and then is it two stories above that?
The base, daylight basement will be below, below grade.
Right, but you gotta have windows someplace.
Yes. So, if you see the drawing on the right, the rear elevation?
Yes, where the yellow lines come across.
Yeah, that's where, that's what the back will look like.
Then the next row of windows above the yellow lines, is that one level of apartments?
The bottom one is one level, those are two apartments on the bottom, and the next two levels up is one apartment. So there's 1, 2, 3 on the top, and then 2 on the bottom, so there'll be-
Okay, but are the apartments that are above grade?
Yes.
Are they one floor or two floors?
Two floors.
There, so each apartment is two floors?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
See, if you look at the one on the left?
Yep.
That's what it would look like in the front, those two stories.
I was just seeing all of these rows of windows, and I wasn't quite understanding what the scale was, and how, how many apartments you were really going to have.
Yeah.
Now, my big concern, my big, biggest concern is traffic. And you know that intersection, Washington Street and JFK, KMD? And then the other issue is, I call it the KMD bypass, which is Washington Street and Lincoln Street. And I'm very concerned that with this density of traffic, people are gonna have a hard time turning left, because the traffic is backed up. So they're gonna turn right, and then turn down Lincoln Street. And we have lots of people, we have lots of Colby students that run on Lincoln Street. Neighbor tonight, when we came over, she was walking her dog on Lincoln Street. So that, that's my concern, is traffic.
And would the city engineer determine whether or not a traffic study needs to be done? I know that it's not technically our board.
By ordinance, it's not enough traffic to trip that, but he could make some recommendations.
Okay.
John, how close is the, uh-
You're not on.
John, how close is the apron for the traffic coming in and out of the new development to the street? That's, there's a street directly across, but there's a garage, auto body?
They're offset to each other.
Okay.
Yeah, because they're, they're like on the beginning of our property, on the left end, and we're over towards the middle more.
Jefferson? Jefferson. Has the city engineer or anyone expressed any concern about having two interchanges that close together? They seem like they're very clo, they're both high-traffic, Jefferson Street and the new development, they're, seem like they're high-traffic.
Well, the traffic was so low during the other ones, and when we talked about it, it really wasn't, it didn't become an issue.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I can see that being a concern, just, I drive that every day, too. And so, like, when you have McDonald's in the morning, KMD in the morning, and then people act like idiots coming out of like, where Jo, um, where-
The beverage place.
Damon's is, yeah, I wanted to call it Jokas. So I could see like, how we have so many entrances now that didn't used to be there. So I absolutely can see the concern. And if the lights backed up, like, your residents might not be able to get in and out. So I just wanna make sure that Andy has reviewed that thoroughly.
We, we talked about it in the last meeting, I mean, KMD has 2,500 cars-
Yeah.
An hour.
Yeah, it's a lot.
Yeah, so that's-
There seems like more and more accidents. Lots of accidents lately on KMD. No, this comes out onto Washington Street, yeah. I assume you're, is it, it must be a two-way entrance, right?
Yeah.
You're having entrance and then exit, like, right on, next to each other.
Right, it's, one of the, the city engineer came to us and had us widen it and do certain things with culverts and those kind of things, so far.
How far is it from the light, do you think, John, do you have any idea?
It's got a, well, it is, it was 400 feet to the manhole, which was right where the bank is, so it's that much again, so it's probably 1,000 feet to the light.
Yeah, okay.
John, are these construction, are these wood-framed?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
They're gonna actually come in, I, I work with Webber and those guys, they actually come modularized. Where you come, you pick the wall right off the truck, and it's got the windows all in it. And so, then you put the next level of flooring down, and then you set the, I mean, the building will go up in about a week, you know?
What's the timeline on something like this, when, if you get approval, what's the?
Suit, I mean, I've gotta go from here to the city, when I'm done, when I get final, I'm working with the city. And as soon as the city goes, we'll go, we're, everything is ready to go, everyone's ready, and I really can't start until the city says go.
Would you stagger occupancy as one building gets done?
Yes. Like, I'd go, and I'd, I'd build unit one, which is the one on the right, and I would build that one, I'd have the foundation, I'd do one and two's foundation same time, and I would hope to have 1, 2, 3, and 4 undercover. I would have one in, I don't know when I start, but if I started July 1st, September, I would, September, October, I'd be moving into one, and by, when December came, I'd want all four undercover. So we would finish them, and then I would do the next quadrant next summer.
Phase one would be 2024, be completion by the end of 2024, and phase two?
Phase one will go a little into 25, finishing the, but the houses, the outside wouldn't know. Because the outsides would be completely done, all the roofs, all the siding, all the windows, that'll be all done. The only thing we might be doing on building four or three is finishing up, finish work, or doing things like that.
And do you have any timeline on a proposed phase three with those additional four units?
I, I would, I mean, I know we say there's a big demand for housing and stuff like that. If we go and they fill them up, and we'll go right into it. So we would go, I would assume the next summer or the latter part of, if all of a sudden we build these and they're all filled up, you know, banks are, especially with interest and crazy stuff, they're saying, hey, let's do this, and then go from there. I said, I'm gonna design the whole system for all 12 buildings, but we're really only gonna do the eight, and that's all we have plans for now.
Do you have contractors lined up, is this?
Yes.
You ready?
I do a lot of it.
Yeah.
So unfortunately, I'm from, I do a lot of work in Portland, so, but all my contractors will come up. My, my guy, my personal guy is driving from Waterville to Portland every day, so they're more excited about this than anybody.
Any other questions from the public? Amy?
So when would the eight buildings be done, do you think?
Uh, four done the first quarter of next year. The first one will probably be done in September, first building. And we'll, we'll get them done tarred, and so we can occupy, we'll, we'll occupy as we go.
Do you know what the cost for rental is?
Yes, it's going to be for the two-story, it's probably gonna be in the range of $2,000, and that's 1,200 square feet. And the bottom one will be 900 square feet. They'll both be, the upstairs one will be one and a half baths, the two bedrooms, and the two bedrooms will be upstairs. And the downstairs one will be two bedrooms, and it'll be one pool bath.
Did you see a price difference between the two?
Excuse me?
The, the 1,200 foot, square foot ones and 900 square foot ones are different prices?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, and the 900 ones will be $1,500.
Okay, so your approval is only good for two years, so you might wanna ask for an extension, just in case, right up front.
But we're only gonna approve eight, right?
No. Whatever you have approved.
Okay.
It's only good by ordinance for two years, so I'm suggesting if you ask for an extension, then you won't have to come back here, just in case anything happens to hold.
Okay. Do I ask now?
Yeah.
Well, it would be part of the, yeah, final plan.
It's, it's not gonna-
That's what they all said. I can't tell you how many times people have come back and asked for reapproval.
Once a shovel goes in the ground, it will be done very quickly. But it's when do we, when do we put shovel in the ground? Because I have to go through this, and then I have to go back to City Hall, and then everybody's good to go. Everybody's good to go from there.
Well, do you have to get DEP approval?
No. We're under, we're under 40,000 square feet of impervious, so we don't need a stormwater. We need stormwater by city and by ordinance, and we need that, but we don't need state approval. We just, we just need local.
While we're on the topic of DEP, the fill that you had, that, that site that was tested, it's all clean, there's no environmental issues?
Yeah, we, we had some help in the, we, because we were concerned about it, that it would be bad fills. But as we take it out, we'll test it, and what, and the testing that was done originally, that, that didn't have any problems either. But we'll, once we get to ground level, we'll test that, we'll come into a study on that, and that will determine the footing, foundation, loads and all that. But the preliminary, the preliminary testing says if we go down six feet, we'll be back to virgin soil, and it'll be like the neighbors around us.
Where's all the excavation, excavated fill going? Is, is off, off-site?
Off-site.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I know where it's going, if you're heading up towards Oakland, and you take that left with the car dealership, there's a, um, by plate, Buddy has a place right there, he wants, he wants us to put it. But now, doing this, it's not gonna be massive like that other one. I mean, we will be taking fill off, and we'll be cutting the soil, we will do the drain runoff to the back. So we are gonna have to cut to get, make sure all the water runs to one location and just settles right there.
And with the retention pond that you had spoken about, is that gonna be under-drained soil filter? Is that gonna have a liner, how is that going to work?
We haven't finalized that of what, because it really won't be a retention pond, because we, it's gonna be, it's gonna be the water will run there, and it'll give it a place to disperse itself. I don't ever see it holding water, I mean, I see it just-
We'd have a stormwater hookup to the sewer system?
I don't.
Oh, no, okay.
We, we didn't put it in, I could talk to the sewer district, and if we wanted to, we could, I didn't know if they would want the-
They always wanted the runoff separated, that was a, a big issue with the sewer district for a while, so.
Well, then we could, as we're putting this retention pond, all the water goes into there with the, you know, material in it, that settles, and you take it off the top of the retention pond, that's what we would feed, that's what would leave our property if we had to.
Right. Thank you.
I, I have a question about phase two, so the four buildings that you might put in there in the end. If you have the dumpster back there, and then you said not retention pond, but we're funneling water back there, what, what happens to that functionality? Because there's gonna be a dumpster back there, too, and things are looking kind of tight. I don't know if this is to scale or not, I'm just imagining four more buildings in that space back there. And I don't see how there could be a fire engine turnaround, dumpster, retention pond, and four more buildings.
We have, we, we've already laid out the other drawings.
Yeah, okay.
And so we'd already set the other 12, originally it was gonna be 12, and that's what we're gonna bring. But because of situation, the banks and all that, they wanted to just put the four, so all we did was just cut it off. So all we did was just cut it off. We had that same fire turnaround, we had all of that. We also got that back 30, that back 40 feet that we can't build, I mean, we can't, we can do anything we want on it, we put a building on it, put the dumpsters back there, we can do anything we wanted to back there. My, my thought is, in the end, I would probably make that as a retention area, so I would put all of that water and things back there. I also have the front of the building, which we contemplated putting a building in the front, because the way the water comes in from the city-
Mm-hmm.
It has to go to one building because the water district will not separate water, so you only have one line coming in with one meter for all those buildings. So I have, I have to put all that into either unit, building one, or I have to put it into a separate building that I'm contemplating doing. And the whole thing with the dumpster, I mean, I might think about that now. I'll make sure when we come back, I'll have a dumpster or I'll have the location of where the dumpster is going to be. And I'll also bring, I mean, we don't, we're not planning on doing, it would be a while down the road, the other four buildings.
Yeah.
But-
Yeah, I just, that's a lot of, a lot of things to pack into the space I'm looking at. But if it's, yeah, we can see the plans.
Also make sure that you have the landscaping plan and how you're going to screen the surrounding residential.
Well, on the left, it's, that's going to be a natural wooded buffer anyway. And I will check and if it makes them happy, I could put trees in the back that would, if I had to, right in that buffer zone, right on the edge.
Well, and part, part of it is the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
This is commercial.
It's commercial A.
Commercial A.
Yeah.
So, and the others are residential. So there needs to be a screening, right?
It says in the zoning ordinance, screenings in residential zones, walls or fences not exceeding six feet in height may be erected on the property lines in residential zones to screen from commercial.
John, have you thought about a fence in the back there or?
Of course you can't even.
Have you thought about a fence for privacy in the back? Or were you planting trees or just?
I don't think they want a fence. I, I don't think the neighbors want, I mean, I'll do what they want. They want to put a fence up, then I'll put a fence up. But I don't think they want to be looking at a fence.
If it's trees, it makes no difference. I'm interested that the, for a patch on the top side and the back, if that was a deed to the buffer area, would it buffer in your deed?
Yes.
So I mean, I can build on that here.
Are there existing, are there not existing trees in the back part of that easement?
There's probably.
Yeah.
There's no trees, there's nothing back there.
My, my question, Sylvia, was the, you see the gray area on the map that's like right next to your property?
Right.
That's a, a deeded, that's part of the deed, he can't go into that or change that. So I asked if there are existing trees there.
But there, it, it's all a wooded area.
It's a, it's wooded.
The trees fell down in December.
Yeah.
You know, we cleaned that up. But, yeah, I mean, it's just a matter of the trees, give some privacy and a sense of peace.
Yeah, so he can't touch those trees, is what he's saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're not going to go anywhere. But Sam-
That damage must be poor on another piece of property right up above us. And they just tossed them over the edge and made a real mess. So I'm concerned about, you know, just the privacy aspect of it and the fact that I don't want a lot of extra water down there. Those are my concerns because-
The other thing too is, I'm not selling these units, so they're going to be my responsibility. I mean, they're, so if it's not the way, these neighbors are upset, because I saw, I was here at one meeting with the trailer, when the trailer parks and I'll upset these people. And I, that's just one thing I said, I'm not doing any of that. And if they want a fence, we'll put a fence. If that, if that's what makes them happy, if putting trees, we'll, we'll screen it whatever way they're happy with.
John, who does that sewer easement benefit? If someone is going to put a sewer line in it, the trees could be cut in that 40-foot wide easement. Do you know who's-
Well, sewer line, I mean, that's a 40-foot easement. I mean, I have a 20, I mean, if you're putting a sewer line in there, you know, that's a, that's a 10-foot easement where the pipe is going to be, if, they're not going to do it now because it's obviously, they did it out back. But regardless, in that easement, that would be a 10-foot easement, they would put a pipe in, they'd bury it, like I'm doing behind there for those guys, and then you'll never even know it's there.
Well, the, the sewer district typically clears 15 feet on either side.